Uh, we're ready. Motion to accept minutes from some day.
So moved.
January 26th.
January 26th.
So moved. Second? You okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
There's a Gary Stone in the house somewhere. Oh, Gary, you're up here.
Well, um...
This is gonna be a SCAMS update, right?
SCAMS update, yeah. Um, I thought Mark Gilmore was gonna come tonight. He may still show up. May give a little more input than I can give, but, um, the Board of Oversight for SCAMS is still very interested in moving into the Whately building. But our hands are tied, as you know. With all the uproar and everything going on, uh, we can't do anything until town meetings to find out if the three towns will vote to move to Whately. But we are very interested. Our director is very interested. Um, so I don't really know what else to give you for input, um, as far as what we can do. There's nothing we can do at this point.
So I take it this is a group in Deerfield that's opposed to moving into having SCAMS in the Whately?
And we know what I've read in the papers.
Yeah. So that's what I've heard. Are they also, besides not wanting to move into Whately, are they also wanting to disband SCAMS and just have their own EMS?
From what I've read in the papers, um, that was kind of like a alternative, you know, if they...
If they think that...
To try to keep it... If they can't keep it in Deerfield, you know, keep the regional service in Deerfield, then they wanna push to pull out of the regional system and try to run it themselves.
I don't...
I don't see how that can happen. We've talked a little bit about it. I mean, if they... I think what they need to do is do a lot more research. Right now, it seems like everything is based on misinformation. These people don't have all of the facts. I kinda sympathize with them. As you guys know, I had a hard time losing our ambulance. And I understand where they're coming from, but I didn't have facts to base it on. They do. You know, at the time, alls I had was information that it was all speculated, and this is promises, this is what we thought we could do, which turned out very well. Um, as far as what they have, it's... Everything I read about in the paper, all these different things are misinformation.
So from the board's point of view, SCAMS is functioning better than our previous arrangement where we had... We weren't cooperating, working together.
And the data would back that up.
And the data would back... So Deerfield, some people in Deer...
We have the facts. And what I brought up in our last meeting is to have our director put an article in the paper about all the facts. Try to get the facts out there so that when these opponents start talking to different people and try to convert them to keep this in Deerfield, then they will have some facts to base it on. Right now, they don't have anything. Alls they have is what these opponents are telling them, which is all, you know, I mean, they come up with the idea that it's gonna take four minutes longer to get from Whately to Deerfield Station, you know? Only because somebody, one of those opponents drove the distance, had to go through the stop signs, had maybe had to wait for a train, I don't know. But, you know, it's... The way we don't... We figure it out, it's a lot better system, a lot better location.
And isn't it fair to say that... The average is about seven and a half minute response time right now.
Seven point ten.
Seven point ten, okay, okay. Even if you... Let's... Let's give them the benefit of the doubt for a second. If you added four minutes to the response time...
Still better than what you had before.
That's still a lot better than what they had before. And again, as we talked about when we were saying this to begin with, time means lives, time means time not spent in the hospital, they can get you home more quickly.
Well, it's hard to sell that point, seeing how they've already seen the seven minute response time.
Right. Oh, I get that. This is working. My question for you, Gary, is, wouldn't it be helpful to get an estimate of the renovation costs that will be... I guess I'm wondering, in strategy, do you go to town meeting saying, "Do you support this?" And we'll get you the data later in terms of final cost? And we already know what the rental agreement would be. Or do you get the cost and say, "This is what it's going to cost the three towns"?
You talking about Deerfield alone, or each, all three towns?
Each one, yeah, because we have town meetings coming up in the spring, and we're not gonna get it by this spring, obviously. I can't imagine unless we just good look for a blessing that we're gonna move to Whately and then we'll figure out the cost later. So that means it goes to a special town meeting. And I think that we are well-served to go to the special town meetings in each of the three communities sooner rather than later. And I guess I'm wondering, do we have a better chance at really nullifying all their arguments if we go to town meeting with all the information so that we should now just continue to proceed with getting our ducks in a row, getting the final designs here, getting the cost here, so that we have a package to present to town meeting rather than, uh, "This is what we'd like the towns to support in principle"?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I mean, everybody is a little gun-shy right now, is, uh... I mean, the board really doesn't wanna spend any money on this endeavor until they get the okay to go ahead with it. I mean, we can still come up with our final, uh, plan, you know, a floor plan, stuff like that, but that's kind of peanuts as far as the overall cost. I mean, you know, and to go any further, to get an architect or anything, it's gonna cost money.
Right.
And I think that's where they're kinda leaning is wipe all money into it if it's not gonna happen, so...
Well, see, I don't think it's not gonna happen. I think... I think that it will pass all three towns regardless, it's just a question of which is quicker and a more sure thing to get the tremendous people in Deerfield to understand that they're being misled by a very small group of people who didn't want SCAMS to be created to begin with. I just don't know the answer to that, because we gotta move forward.
I don't know where their position was when it originally came.
Because otherwise, SCAMS does go away. If we can't figure out how to take these next steps, SCAMS does go away. Because we can't afford to continue to pay the... What we're paying to the South Deerfield Fire District right now, and we all know that that's gonna go up by eighteen thousand dollars in a year. And if they say that that's not true, then they should read the public document, it's called a contract.
Well, that is fact.
That's fact.
That's what I mean.
Right.
The facts need to be out there, and right now, they're not.
And fifty-two percent of a big number is more than fifty-two percent of a small number. I'm serious.
The other...
The other thing they don't really understand is they keep coming up with those numbers. They say, "We're paying fifty-two percent, and we're only getting thirty-three percent of the vote." Well, that's... There's no relevance there. I mean, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. They are not paying any more than the other towns. Maybe in the overall, uh, the big dollar amount, they're paying more, but not per call. Per call, they're paying the same as at all three towns.
If they're equal vote, what difference would it make?
They're paying fifty-two percent more, but they're getting fifty-two percent more. As far as one-third vote...
Yeah. What difference would that make?
Originally, we voted... All three towns voted to have a three-town collaboration, and that's what we have.
And it's worth it.
And it should be equal amount, equal people from each town on that board, which it is. And I can't remember a time when we had a big vote where we had people, you know, wondering, "Well, I don't know if I wanna vote for that or not." It was always pretty much unanimous on any vote we'd done. So one more vote from them, really, at this point, is irrelevant as well.
And by the... Right, because six to nothing, even if they got one more vote, and let's say that was a dissenting vote, it's then six to one. It's not suddenly... That one person isn't gonna sway the other two people. The two people who represent Deerfield on this board are very smart, people who care a tremendous amount about public safety. And it's really a shame that they're being branded as these people who don't care about public safety by the naysayers in Deerfield. It's not gonna change anything. Fred's right. And so I just... I would like to figure out how to move forward as quickly as possible to town meetings and put pressure on the naysayers, because they will lose the vote if we do a good public outreach effort. They will lose, just like they lost before.
That's what needs to happen. The facts need to be out there for people to see.
Well, the...
I know there's been a lot of... We've always invited anybody who has any complaints or anything, we've always invited them to our Board of Oversight meetings. But one person who does come to a lot of the meetings says that it's never posted in Deerfield Office. Evident, I don't know if it's on their website or not, but it's never posted where anybody can read it, for some reason.
You guys should be aware of the vote that Deerfield took, the sense of the resolution was a voice vote. And there was a call for a vote in the middle of the discussion by SCAMS representatives that was trying to provide all the facts. So they cut debate short. They knew they probably didn't have the hand-count votes, so they asked for a voice vote, and no one...
Contested it.
No one contested the call for the voice vote. They will lose a hand vote.
Well, here's something else they could lose, and SCAMS could lose, and we all could lose. We have an empty space in our building that we're paying for. And we promised our voters, and we were under the impression this was gonna happen. And now we're sitting with an empty space that's costing the town money, and we've got people who wanna occupy that space. Deerfield should know, or the people that are opposing this move should know that it's not gonna sit empty forever.
Right. They're fine with that, though, Paul, so that's not...
Yeah, they may be fine, but other people may not be so fine, you know?
I don't know if our board really was aware of all of what really needed to happen. I think that the board thought that they could say, "Okay, we can move wherever we want." But evidently, that's not the case. Evidently, it was in the original agreement saying that they had to go before the three towns to make a move. And I don't think we knew that. We didn't discuss it anyways. We thought, "Okay, we found a place, let's move to it."
I think the SCAMS board should... Because you guys are all my friends. I think you should be very confident in going to each of the three towns that once the... Once an information campaign goes out there and is public and is orchestrated, the vote will demonstrate once again that the people of Deerfield support whatever SCAMS... Whatever decision the Board of Oversight makes, and they will support this move again by about nine to ten, which is what Deerfield did when it supported SCAMS to begin with. These guys are minority, they're just loud.
Yeah.
But loud people can change people's minds if they don't have the facts.
Right.
The facts need to be there.
It's my understanding that SCAMS is also looking at other locations.
We have looked at other locations.
But have you informed anybody of that or come up with data to show either it's not cost-effective, or there's not enough space there, or do what you want?
Anybody who's asked about it, we've told them.
That was presented at the meeting.
Yeah. We have looked at a number of places. They looked at putting an addition on the South Deerfield Station, which was priced like two million dollars. I mean, it was unbelievable amount of money.
But if you're gonna...
They had somebody in Deerfield who was gonna build a place for us, which was a lot of money.
But if you're gonna put out facts about the service, how good it is, I guess I would think, put out facts about what other alternatives are gonna cost...
Exactly.
I hear what you're saying, and I guess I'm aware of some of that. I don't think the general public knows unless they tune into all these meetings. And you could tell them it's gonna cost you more if you build your own or keep it in Deerfield, but I think maybe present them some numbers, some facts, if you stay in Deerfield, this is what it's gonna cost for the building. And add it, it's not only the building, because we're talking here remodeling costs. You're not gonna buy a building and just move in, you gotta remodel too, so look at the complete package of alternate locations. Maybe present that to the public, or public meetings, or newspaper articles.
That's exactly what I suggested last meeting.
And what was the response?
They wanna do it. They said they're gonna do it.
When's your next meeting?
Um, I think we're gonna have one this Thursday, we're supposed to. I haven't gotten a final word on it, but...
Where's it gonna be held?
Usually at the Sunderland Public Safety Complex.
Okay.
Okay.
Gary, thank you. You are doing great service to all three towns in what you're doing.
Well, we just said our hands are tied at this point, and we'd love to get it moving, but, you know, it's very tough to have three ambulances in three locations, and the director, and a fourth location. It's just nothing... That part of it is not running very efficient at all. The overall service is running good, but just to get a backup ambulance is taking you longer than it normally should. If you have them all in one spot, a second ambulance can be there in a matter of minutes.
It's also costing the three towns a lot more money, exactly, three different locations and everyone in a central location. And the South Deerfield Fire District cannot provide one central location. As wonderful a building as it is, they cannot provide three different locations. So I... We need to figure out how to get the information out there. I don't think we give a problem in Whately, I don't think we give a problem in Sunderland. It's the lack of correct information in Deerfield that's in this package.
Well, hopefully, our next meeting will make that happen.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
All right, what else, Mark?
Next up here is the contract for virtual town hall. I've reviewed it, and I just need a signature. The initial startup cost would be forty-five hundred dollars, as discussed the night Bill was here. Fifteen hundred dollar annual service would be prorated, and it would not begin until the website goes live, so...
So when will this start?
They'll start working on it as soon as we get the contract back to them.
How long before it's up to them?
That's probably up to us, until you guys are happy with the website. It's gonna take some time.
It's gonna take a couple months.
Oh, yeah, of course. But I mean, it won't go live until you're happy with it, you've seen it, and you're ready.
I would like to be involved in the design and that kinda stuff, having some experience with this.
Sure. Of course. Next up is the water merger committee appointments. I'm gonna request that this be put on hold temporarily. Fred, you had a conversation with the water commissioners?
Water commissioners, yeah.
They've invited the water district and representatives from the water district and have a conversation about the merger before we appoint a committee, which I think is probably a good idea, make sure everyone's on the same page.
Sure.
We have a list of potential committee members who've agreed to be on committee, so after that meeting happens, which will be at their... What is it, first Tuesday of March? We'll go ahead and I'll put the appointments on your next agenda.
Okay.
That's okay.
Fine.
Uh-huh.
A flag. A flag.
Hey, do we have a Whately anthem? Adelia?
There's a Whately song.
Do we have a Whately anthem?
There's a Whately song.
Singing.
By singing. Oh, give me the words. I'll make something up.
So Dominic from the recorder emailed me earlier today and said he was not able to be here.
Ah.
I'm gonna snap a couple pictures of you guys, if you don't mind. He is going to write an article about it.
Okay. Who's gonna hold this one for me? That's cool!
Oh, it's on the other side, too. Both sides. Both sides, wow.
And we only paid for one. One flag?
That's awesome.
That is awesome.
At the town hall.
So we're gonna... We're going to... Do we have a poll yet?
It's on its way. It was backward, but it's on its way. So one will hang here, then we have two flags, one will hang here, and one will go to the State House.
That's awesome.
So we probably got the only green flag in the State House, right?
Get a picture of all three of you with the flags.
That's awesome. There's a little piece of... It's our little piece of Grover's Corners.
Grover's Corners. Is that his street?
No. Who's Grover? Can somebody help Paul out, please, with his American literature?
American literature.
I hate to say it, but I studied American literature. Thornton Wilder, our town.
Oh, your town.
Yeah. Okay.
They're rated, actually.
At some point soon, we need to discuss how our flag is going to get to the State House, so maybe one of our reps...
I go to Boston a lot, so I'm happy to do it.
You missed it last month, you were there.
What's that?
You missed last month, you were there for the...
MMA.
I was there for the MMA, yeah. Yeah, but I'll be in Boston... Actually, I'll be in Boston on the 22nd, the day after I get back, so... I mean, the day I'm free in Boston.
So it has a pocket for the flag poles that they have there?
Who would I bring it to?
I have no idea.
Okay. I'll just wander around with a flag.
Ask for the sergeant in arms.
All the flags.
There they go.
Yeah, I'll find out. I'll find out. I'll contact Steve.
I will check that off the project list.
A dwindling list, yes.
First or second, okay. Mill River, depends on how you consider it lower.
Very efficient team, okay. Roof repair.
Roof repair. I have a contract for you here. We already discussed this, I won't go into details, for three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for snow guards, trim, potential roof leak, ceiling, and fixing all those pipes on the roof. I just need a signature on that, so we can get that going. And that check that's attached to it is the deposit check.
Good. We're just knocking things off the list on which...
Right and left.
And as soon as they get that back, they will order what they need to and schedule it based on the weather.
Town administrator updates.
Town administrator updates.
I'm sure it's a sparse list.
It is. Cell tower update, the RFP publishes tomorrow in the Central Register. The site visit date that we set is... It's a mandatory site visit, it's February 24th at 10:00 a.m. The question deadline is set for March 7th at 4:30 p.m., meaning we won't accept questions after that date. Proposals are due the following week, on March 14th at 12:00 noon, and I will schedule it's the same day as our special town meeting, but I'll schedule the bid opening for 12:30, so there's a little breathing room that same day.
Good. Cool. What date is that again?
March 14th.
Do they have to go to site visit?
It's mandatory site visit.
Mandatory site visit, okay.
So I just wanted to let you know that that will be posted tomorrow, and it will also be on our website as of tomorrow morning. Quickly, Mill River, construction down there has concluded.
Wow.
I don't know if you've been by there or noticed. Site visit demobilization occurred last week. The plantings and relocation, obviously, of rare species will resume in the spring. Project was over budget by about five thousand dollars, which in the scheme of things really is not a big deal.
Why was it over budget, though?
It was over budget because they were removing fill from one part of the channel, from the new channel, to fill the old channel. And because of compaction, because of saturation and whatnot, they were short fill, so we had to haul fill in. And I should add a thank you to our highway guys for being willing to haul fill, and because they were able to do that for us, we were able to keep the project moving. Had it gone over the ten thousand dollars, we would've had to put the brakes on the project and gone out the bid, so...
So it was a five thousand dollar overrun, and how... What was the total cost of the project?
The total cost of the project initially was two hundred ninety-four thousand dollars, seventy-five percent of which was paid for by Mima. So we did over budget for it by about twelve, fifteen thousand dollars, something like that, for the event.
As a contingency.
Yeah, exactly. So in the scheme of things, this was actually not a big deal, as far as I'm concerned, for a three hundred thousand dollar project to come in five thousand dollars over budget. And I just wanna remind you also that the original low bid was three hundred and four thousand, so there was already, and some code agreed to come down to match what Mima had approved, so there was already, you know, significant savings there, and we budgeted extra four.
So we spent less than we had asked for at town meeting?
Exactly. So we're still on budget, we're not asking for any more money, but there was the additional trucking cost of fill. So, again, as far as I'm concerned, it was a...
Okay, great, great.
Successful project, so...
Good news. Wow. Oh, it's good news.
Solid waste. Oh, no, we're not there yet, I'm sorry.
No. Office renovation plans, I just wanted to let you know that I did speak with George from Jones Witzit. He had a conversation with the building inspector, and we'll not be needing a Chapter 34 review, the architectural review for our renovations down on the south side here. So more good news. I'm in the process of getting estimates on some HVAC work in that area, and my plan is to start drafting the RFP as soon as I get the first draft of the FY17 budget completed, so it's on my radar. So that's moving along.
Good.
Lastly here, since Adelia's still here, too, this is a good time. The Whately Historical Society, we had sent them a letter back in December, just, you know, kind of laying out the proposal for them renting in the center school. There's a question here in the letter, it says that the Historical Society will be responsible for the cost of electricity, heat, and elective utilities, and a renter's liability policy. And I just wanna ask you for clarification's sake, are you looking for a policy that covers contents or a liability policy from the Historical Society as a renter? We have a liability policy on the building.
Right.
But if we were gonna have an event here, you know, if somebody wanted to use this building for an event, or town hall, or any building, they would typically have a liability policy. And I think that's where that wording came from, you know, a one-day liability policy or a weekend policy.
But if something happens, let's say that the Historical Society has their Memorial Day event, picking something, and something were to happen, somebody slipped and sprained their ankle, and just... That would be covered under our...
That's what's not clear.
Well, we need council's advice on that, then.
I don't know either.
I gotta believe that...
I'm not sure if it changed when we relocated here.
There's a policy... There's a overarching policy on all fields. I mean, if... If anything happens on town property, when it's in use by someone who we've granted permission to use, it would strike me that that is covered under our liability policy.
So why don't I do this? Why don't I get some more clarification from our insurance company? But you're not concerned with contents, right?
Well, I assume they were... They were there, they're on policy.
They're concerned with contents. It's not the...
Yeah, I'm not... I mean, that's...
It's the liability.
That's sort of their... If they're not gonna insure their contents, then...
Yeah. I know that from my little concert experience, we insure every event with event insurance. It's just for that day.
Right.
As the...
I know that, you know, a baseball organization like Cal Ripken, while we use town fields, we also carry insurance.
That's what I was getting at, and that's what I'm wondering, if that's what they need, but I'll get clarification from our...
It's not very insurance. I mean, it adds up if you have a lot of events, but for one single event.
See, this is not a one event. This is all the time.
Oh, okay, so not just for the-
They're just one day.
Not just for the memorial.
Okay. Find out about both, about both scenarios, the ongoing and the events. Is that clear, Mark?
It's like if somebody falls down at the transfer station, it's us the town and we, is our liability?
That's our, but that's town function. But that's town function. It's, it's the, it's the things that aren't part of ongoing town operations.
Well, like the snowmobile.
The snowmobile, that's a good example of that.
So, they have a meeting and somebody falls in town property and hurts themselves. Are we covered? Or?
Yeah.
Are they covered?
That's a question. I don't know. It's never been addressed.
We should find these things out.
We should find these out, yeah.
I will find out.
Because it's not just the Historical Society.
Yes, and I can answer you before the next meeting, one way or another, so if you're okay with that.
Yeah, okay.
Um, you mentioned about getting quotes for your HVAC system. Um, would it, would you be able to do something like that to get costs? What it would cost SCAMS to do whatever needs to be done over there in that section?
As far as HVAC goes?
As far as the cost, yeah, because I don't know, um, I don't know what has to be done.
Once we have the plans.
Well, you know what the square footage is at this point, so.
But they're going to want it all.
I would think you could come up with-
There might be control issues, like we might want to control them differently in different spaces and make modifications to allow for that.
I was just wondering if we could get some kind of a rough estimate from the same guy while he's doing it.
Well, we probably could, but we'd have to know what you need.
I think it was included in the other estimate, or the one that came up with just saving three hundred thousand or whatever. I thought there was HVAC in there.
Because the other thing they were looking at was putting in your own system, not using that system.
Oh, I, yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
We discussed what was the more prudent way to go. And I think there was a resolution, but we said, "Okay, there is one scenario where it's all one system. There's another scenario where it's, where-"
I was just wondering, and why you got somebody in here if we could-
I didn't work the ass.
Get a ballpark cost.
Sure.
What would it cost? So, we could, rather than us hiring somebody to come in, which the board really doesn't want to do at this point until we know if we can move in.
Right, right.
That way we can start putting numbers together.
That's not a problem. Grodsky, uh, the company that does our servicing here is going to come and do the estimate. Uh, I was under the impression that you guys were talking about doing split systems in that area. And we were going to, because we did say in the lease negotiations that utilities would be separated, huh?
Right.
So, it doesn't make-
But, but ask Grodsky if they're willing to estimate a ballpark estimate for, as Gary puts it, the square footage, a separate system, but with that square footage. And I guess there, I get that there are specifics and details that haven't been fleshed out, but at least, at least get some, some estimate.
It's not going to cost us anyway, yeah.
I was thinking, as long as you got the square footage and, you know, I mean, as far as the room divisions, I wouldn't think that would really make any difference. I mean, you got to eat the whole thing. You got so many square foot, you got fifteen hundred square feet, you know?
He can easily ask.
Yeah.
Right. See what we get for answering?
Okay.
Yeah, maybe one more step closer, though.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, what else, Mark?
Uh, that's all I have for town administration.
Fire department fees?
Yeah, this, this is not something we need to discuss tonight. And what I'm doing is passing this out so that, um, we can discuss it at the next meeting. And I just want to give you a quick background on this. Uh, Chief Hanum had asked me to take a look at the town of Hatfields' fees. They're significantly higher than ours, and, and I think he feels like our fees are falling behind. And as part of the budget process, I asked all departments to review their fees to make sure that we're, uh, bringing in the revenue we need to bring in from these departments. So, what you see here is, uh, three columns. Hat, uh, Hatfields' current fee, Waitley's current fee, and John's recommendations. So, I'm going to ask him to come into the next meeting if you guys have any specific questions on any of these items. Some of them were confusing to me, but he'll be able to make sense of it for you.
This is only-
I'm going to ask you to, uh, discuss and vote on increasing some of these fees at the next meeting.
Okay.
This is a little reading for, in preparation for that.
But these only compare to Hatfields. Is there a way of getting more comparison?
Yeah, we can get some other towns. They just, I guess they seem to have the most complete list of-
Also, also they're a comparable size town.
Does, does Furco or the, or Inspection, Rapid County Inspection Department have these?
Town by town.
Or does Furco keep that information anywhere?
Not that I know of, but we, it, it would, we can ask some other comparable towns, but, um, I think he liked the-
Yeah, and they like Hatfields, Williamsburg.
Yeah.
Sunderland doesn't work, Deerfield doesn't work. They're just bigger. Conway would be good on Ashfield.
Okay.
So, okay.
Um, so we'll come back next meeting with that discussion.
Solid waste.
Solid waste. Phil O'Beir has resigned, uh, so I'd like you to, uh, vote to accept his resignation.
So, with regret.
And, uh, Larry Cutner has, is that how I pronounced his last name right? Larry Cutner has, uh, volunteered to step up and fill his place on that board if you would like to.
I nominate Larry Cutner to fill Phil O'Beir's position. Solid waste.
Second.
Okay, bye.
Done.
Speaker of committees was, uh, Gary, uh-
I think his last name is-
Lawrence.
Lawrence.
He was on the, uh-
Is that been, was there an opening on that committee or?
There's still another opening on that committee to take Gary's seat, if anyone's interested in that position.
We have two, two openings in Housing Committee.
Sure, openings in Cultural Council. There are a lot.
We probably need to put together a list of, and we definitely need to.
We need Dan to step up.
Get on some of these- Thirty-four E saves us somewhere between five and ten grand. Just a matter of business.
Yeah, that's one.
It's a great, great little nut. Um, I, I'm going to make a suggestion in terms of that, and we can noodle it for a while, but we have a lot of openings. My guess is we probably have somewhere between seven and fourteen openings in different committees in town. I, I, I think that we should have a segment of town meeting, a recruitment for volunteers to fill, fill, fill the time. I mean, this town does not run itself, and we need people to step up. And I think town meeting is the logical place to start that recruitment process. There are people who obviously care about the town because they're at town meeting.
Yeah, sounds good.
Maybe what we can do is come up with a list of board and committee openings in the meantime.
But, yeah, absolutely.
But one, one thing that may help, and, and I've noticed on, on some other towns' websites is some description of what the committee does. You know, we did that for the Housing Committee. We put a mission statement on, what objectives are.
Perfect time for that.
And once we update the website, because you have Conservation Commission, Ag Commission. I don't know exactly what they do. And if people don't know what they do, why, how are you going to volunteer for something you don't know what they do?
Well, I, I think another thing we could do is recognize people that are on committees more prominently, like, you know, have a display out there in the hallway prominently. Your, your Agricultural Commission members are, your CPA people are dedicated to providing you with service.
Any photographers in town here where?
Who?